So lots of plugs and which is...
Okay, we have seven o'clock, so let's call this meeting in order to begin the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do not need a forum, let's do what we'll call our council members anyway. Steve Carey.
Here.
Carol Luncant.
Here.
PJ Jones. Lexi Murphy.
Here.
Gina Rowan.
Here.
All right, the agenda for tonight is really, not really an agenda, but we would have a motion to approve said agenda for the public forum to discuss parking restrictions on narrow city streets.
A second.
Carol made motion, Gina's made a second to support approval of the agenda for tonight, which contains the public forum alone. Do we have any other discussion regarding that? As we'll call for a vote, all in favor of approving the agenda for tonight, say aye.
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 And opposed, say nay. General ayes, no hesitations. Agenda approved. Welcome guests. We do have a sign-in sheet, hopefully you're able to sign in and let us know you're here. And now we are just going to open floor up. We do, we will treat this somewhat like open comments at the beginning of the meeting in that to be asked that you have about five minutes per person per topic to speak. And then, but unlike open comments before a meeting, we will obviously allow council to respond and ask questions and have a conversation. So it will be somewhat like that, that we want to keep it somewhat orderly, but otherwise it can just be an open discussion as long as everyone stays within the lanes of decency. Fair enough?
So, Brian, I'll present first though?
That's what I was hoping too.
Yeah.
Okay, we need a summary of the situation?
Yeah.
Back in May, at the end of May, it was brought to our attention that perhaps a no parking sign on Grossbeck east of Maple, the road is narrow with vehicles parked on both sides. That's where, what began, and then it eventually now became a little bit more of an issue than that. So in response, we are hearing out comments. Basically, the issue, I've highlighted some of these here, these are streets, if you have the map, you will see that 29 and 24 are the other two numbers, and that 30 is typically the streets that we figure are adequate and safe for two vehicles to park on both sides, I mean, two vehicles, vehicles parked on both sides, plus allow adequate distance in between for larger vehicles such as school buses, fire trucks, ambulances, garbage trucks, and our city crew of vehicles and such. So there are several of these that already have some sort of parking restrictions. Grossbeck has one from Maple all the way down to the school to Willow, where there's no parking on the north side. And then some other ones over by the school have also special no parking rules based on school accessibility and such. Otherwise, the, and the commerce streets are all different because of the park and the fact the elevator's on the side, there's not a lot of residences. So again, that's, there's really just one house that faces on Commerce there on that first block of this side of Maine. And then we have Day and Green and Grossbeck. So Day and Green are really the issues, east-west streets. And Rutledge would be your north-south street, although it already has some, no parking on half parts because of the school issues and such for that. So it's Mickley, and part of Mickley is also two blocks of it, it looks like. Would that be fair assessment, Brian, summarizing?
I already excused myself from this.
Okay, don't ask you, got it. All right. So that is what we have found here in measuring street widths. Other than that, when doing research and discussing the topic related to emergency response, which is what the topic came up, that the Fire Protection Agency, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, NFPA wants 20 feet unobstructed width and 13 and a half vertical for fire truck, fire apparatus to go through. An average car is about five to six feet wide, a pickup might be six to seven feet wide, a semi is eight and a half feet wide, and I believe that is the max for federal vehicles is eight and a half or 102 inches wide. So in doing that math, you can see how there are some examples, how, what happens when you have different streets and what is parked by it, and how interim you would have in between said vehicles as well. So if you kind of do some math and you see that 24 feet wide, oh, let's see, would allow you to get how many vehicles here? Where's my, I have 29 divided by the eight feet, will give you 3.6, and that gives you about two and a half between both vehicles. Two and a half feet on either side of your vehicle to go through with counting three, eight foot vehicles across would be 24 plus five, 29. So 24 makes that space in between that much shorter. And again, you're also assuming that people are parking as close to the curb as they can, which I'm sure as anyone that's driven around town is not always the case, and sometimes it's hard to do. So that is where our situation is. So the discussion is just that for people that don't have this currently have a restriction on their street, could they put it and should it be added to all streets uniformly across the city limits, so that the same response is allowed on those blocks as well as on other streets that are wider. So does anyone want to open it up?
Did you say that Grossbeck is a one-park side?
Just, yeah, just a Maple.
Until Maple, now a block.
Oh.
Yeah, so once it goes past, then you don't.
The question was for this block.
That block.
At Green and there, yeah. So yeah, you're in the 29 area, which is a little wider than Grossbeck, but I thought I'd be, yeah. So as you can see, for some reason, most of the streets were 30s, but not all. And then there are also, I kind of tried to mark truck routes, which don't really apply in this case, but those have been designated that for larger traffic and allowed to be able to turn accordingly, as well to address getting to our industrial and commercial district.
Can I ask, like, are there signs on Maple that say no parking? Okay, because I even saw a deputy parked on Maple last week, and like, it's kind of a no-brainer, but it's...
Does the Fire Association give any reason for the 20 feet?
Does the Fire what? Sorry.
Fire Association or whatever.
The reason?
NFPA.
NFPA.
That's just a standard.
Yeah.
Standard established by parietal data or wish list or what?
Wouldn't you say that's math?
That's, that's a, that's a national deal, that's nothing with State Iowa, nothing.
So two six-foot wide vehicles plus an eight-foot wide emergency vehicles, 20 feet with no despair, so.
So you figure you're going to give yourself the two feet on either side?
Yeah.
That's assuming an eight-foot vehicle parked right at the edge of the curb with no saving space there as well.
I mean, I think, doesn't the ordinance, doesn't the ordinance say that you're supposed to park within 12 inches of the curb? So if you're 12 inches out, that's two feet more from right there, you've already lost.
Are there no parking signs on Maple, or are they on the east side or west side?
West side.
What side?
West side.
West side?
In the ordinance, it states they're figuring this out at 18 inches from the curb. By ordinance, 18? Who else?
Yeah, more than 18 inches from the curb.
That's worse than 12.
I thought it was 12. I thought I got a ticket. More than a ticket.
Somehow it was three feet.
Yeah, right, I thought you lost them.
So, I'm just, I'm just asking a question, so I don't want to break into the, so, would there, is the idea to just pass a citywide ordinance for streets of this width, that they'd be restricted to see where they're parking on, you know, on whatever side? Is that the goal, or is that what we're here to talk about? Is the trick around an idea, or?
Well, that was to extend, for one, it was brought to the attention that the Grossbeck, for example, already has it in place, yet it was absent from a block, technically a block, two blocks, but that other block gets a little weird because it's not gravel, and it gets a little wider, so additionally that block. But then, as we noted, thanks to Ryan and others who have measured, it's a few other streets there in the south as well. So Green and Day also have the same issues, more notably, Green in the middle of town. And then if you look in the streets, you'll see that gutter, there's a little extra curb apron, I don't know if that's the right term for it, but if you can tell, they're a little bit wider, that's that distance that you, that spare distance on both sides that helps those streets get to 29, which is much better than a 24. But I'm sure when you get close to and need to get through a 29 versus a 30-foot street, I think it will just, it may take your mirrors off your car, but if they have to get through, I don't think they're going to, I don't want to speak for our drivers momentarily, but they will sure try, I would guess, if it's an emergency, would you want them to?
So Kelly downloaded a guy off of, off of the internet, it's just a neighborhood street design guideline. It's not, it's just a guideline, it's not a law or anything to that effect. But it did give, it did, and I stapled them together here, it did give some guidelines on widths of streets. Majority of our streets are 24 and 29 feet wide. And these, this sheet that you have, these are the measurements that this, Kelly had his city crew go out and measure and put those measurements on there. So for example, out of this guide, design guide, a 28-foot street has the ability for parking on both sides, that gives seven foot for a car on each side, and then a 14-foot center driveway. A 24-foot street, according to this design guide, has parking on one side, seven foot for one car, and then 16 to 17 feet for a drive path that way. Then when it gets down to 20 feet wide, they don't recommend it at all, having parking on those streets. So the majority of our streets, even at the 29-foot wide, I feel that parking on one side, I mean, on the 29-foot wide streets, you could park the car on each side, still have sufficient pathway through there. But I don't see really that we have a problem in any of the part of the town that is congested. What they, what they, so when the cars, there's also a, I don't want to say a tactic, but there's also a driving tactic that they use, and they call it queuing. And that's when the cars are parked far enough apart that if the street is narrow enough, the traffic can go down and then go around that.
Weave in and out.
Yes, because they can keep the distance apart, so they can weave around that parked car. If they're parked on, you know, if they're parked on both sides. If you have a car coming towards you and another car, they want to pass each other, then that's when they would use the system of queuing, so they could pull over to where typically a car would park and then back into the traffic lane again. So that's what Kelly found. And I don't see that, you know, there's, there's times where there is a concern about parking on the streets, and it can get congested in some streets, but typically, we don't have that, that big of a problem in town. On Willow Street, I think that's a, that can be a concern when there's a home football game, that sort of thing, but I think the school will alleviate that problem when they, when they build their new parking lots and so on. So I don't think there'll be parking on that street during a football game.
They can just keep it on the one side anyhow, don't they?
No.
Don't they? They do.
No, they're.
No parking signs says, no parking from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Oh, it's a game during the afternoon. Okay. Because I was thinking when I went to football games, it was on the one side, I'd never seen it like on Joe Wollenee's side. So that's why I was thinking it was only on the one side. And then they started going down the other one.
Is it 6:00 AM or is it 6:00?
No, sir.
And I understand there's a few blocks that can be congested, and I think the reason that, that Grossbeck was, let's see, Grossbeck, the no parking signs were put on one side because of the school, that was congested down there, the clinic up here for the ambulance to get in, and then at one time, the church up there, they were parking on both sides. And I know for a fact that the church came to the council and asked if the no parking signs could be on one side, because during church services on Sunday, it got very congested there. So that's the reason for those signs on Grossbeck. Otherwise, I don't see any other reason why we would need to put signs on. And I, frankly, I'm not too concerned about the parking, and I don't think we need to do anything. That's my opinion.
We live down on the last block on Grossbeck, and that block from Maple to Harper, Parker, is very often congested, and I, we got a slow way down, and it's just a miracle nobody said something. I don't know why we couldn't make that consistent the whole street.
I would agree with that, because I did hear they had an ambulance and they had a backup.
That's all I think of, is when they had an emergency, they said they backed up.
The garbage truck and, excuse me, the garbage truck and the recycling truck struggle with it repeatedly, where they've got to try and get around.
On that side?
Yeah.
Well, maybe that, we could do that, then make it consistent, like you said, on that street, if that we feel is one of the worst ones around. I don't know if that's.
You already have one-sided parking on Green and Day, right? Is that correct, or?
No.
Uh-uh, just on Grossbeck.
Have there received congestion otherwise, unless it's like somebody's having a party?
The stops on there is, coming up there, when somebody wants to come in.
On Maple?
Time to mind your Grossbeck off of Maple.
There's a difference.
There's no room, and if there's cars parked there, and they're having a round, like, that's a difference.
Well, I guess, I'll, the initial question I asked, which really kicked the pot on this one, was for that one block of Grossbeck. And it's only because it's a street that I take multiple times a day for my bus route and for me personally, because it's my commute for, to my few jobs, and that there was just one block where there was always seeming to congestion, and all the rest of the, the whole street across town is single-sided. And it's narrow. It's considerable, compared to Harker, it's a huge narrowing. So it's just, yeah. And it is the city's council's decision what to do with that. It's just a question about restricting traffic and...
Our ordinance on page 191, which is a no parking zones, and it does list, are already considered no parking for those reasons. And like I said, we tried to like, make light of those. It's 8 to 4 for the parking down there by the school from August 20th to June. And that's on Grossbeck from Rutledge to within Willow, to the edge, within 100 feet of Willow. So that has a school-related one, and the others is over by the apartment, they don't want you to park the apartment down on Grossbeck, so that is also a no parking spot. And then there's a little bit on Rutledge there between where Jenny's, your car wash is, and then coming south on Rutledge on the west side, between roadway and Grossbeck to Green. And that again is past the school route, so that's for that reason. So anyway, there's a whole list of them, and it just, like I said, when they brought it up, that that block was causing problems, and it is strangely just not covered for whatever reason, even though it's just went past Maple, it seemed to make sense that. And then it was brought up that other streets were also just as narrow and could cause problems. So discussion is to decide what is the wisest for allowing for emergency response, because if it's your house that you want the fire or ambulance to get to, and they have to drive around the block, and that extra whatever time that takes, and that's, you know, that's, that's cause for concern. We hope that would never be, and a limiting factor, but we can't determine any of that.
So they just pick and choose certain streets on the ordinances as of now?
Well, I mean, I think they had those reasons as we talked about, there was some school-related.
But that's what they, so we could do the same thing, that we could do that regular street from Grossbeck and make that one street.
It's like technically Swanson is listed on there, well, no one from the south side of North Maine to North Mickley. Although that's a little different, because no one thinks of Swanson as being congested because of people parking there, but it's because of the ballgame, and those houses that do live there have their right to have a backyard without people parking it. So there's no parking on that side, but.
And we're not making a motion tonight anyhow, right?
Correct. This is just, if there are other options in other bigger cities, they have alternating street widths. On Monday, Wednesday, Friday, you park it on this side.
That's going to be more of the other side.
So I think we either need to do it or not to do it. So I don't think we need to do something.
And if we're going to do it, you know, keep it uniform.
But is, so putting the answer right here in the paper, like, that, that the policy is that on the streets that are at a 24-foot width, that it should be restricted to one-sided parking? Because what are, and not just, I think your wording would have to be, you know, on where streets are only 24-foot wide, that would implement a single-sided parking, which would be posted, because that would solve your stretch of day, like, because it, if emergency services is noting that that's a bit of a concern, and that ordinance allows you to park 18 inches from the curb, which eats up another three feet, you get really tight there very fast. And it looks like there's only a few streets that are at 24 feet wide, like Grossbeck is already one-sided, so you just have.
Except for that one block, just the block.
Yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine blocks that right-of-way would fall under that. And you don't have to specify blocks, you specify a measurement that this is how we deal with our mismatch, our mismatched streets, is blocks that are so wide get this type of parking unless otherwise specified. Yeah.
I like that, and that makes total sense to me.
We'd still have to put signs up.
Yeah.
Right.
And that would be quite an expense.
Well, you can look at that though.
You go to many cities and they have, they have that on every single street, like, and multiple times.
Yep.
It's.
You don't have to do it one time.
Yeah, there you go.
Right, and it'll last forever.
I mean, I, I get the idea of minimizing the signs and all that, because that's an expense and that's the labor and all that stuff, but I still like that idea of being consistent.
I agree too.
Not having to set this again.
It's for safety reasons too. And Day Street, and all of those that are the 24s.
But then you also leave open, okay, so how many years we're away from, so let's say in the next 10 years, that last block at Grossbeck gets repaid, re-curved, okay? Well, then that's when those property owners can say, hey, we want to park on both sides. Well, then you need to be willing to give up this many feet of your right-of-way to have that. So that's the solution, and, and that's also going to go, you're going to pay more for, in your taxes for that street in front of your house.
Yep.
Because we're expanding. But see, then that puts it back to the property owner, but like, that's, you have a narrow street, so there's gives and takes for that. So it gives them the ball a little bit.
But knowing people, they're not going to agree.
Of course. And knowing them, they're not going to take off of their property either, at all.
It'll only be a couple feet, but. My, my take on it is, as long as you're compliant with all your ordinances, you can do what you want to do, so, right?
And we can add to the ordinance, make an amendment. And then how are we going to enforce that ordinance? Well. That's the next problem.
Well, it's the same as the officer, since police officers are the enforcement of all parking and traffic-related, so they would have to give up whatever their standard parking ticket would be. I would assume they would be generous enough to do warnings in the beginning for, until people remember.
But that's already an issue that's not getting taken care of.
Parking tickets?
Because in the business district downtown, there's no parking overnight, period, whatever time of year. And there's been several times that I come home from work, yes, at 6:00, it's an hour past the no parking time, but there's cars there.
Because they're supposed to be, for certain businesses, I thought that's what it was said 10 years ago.
So no matter what, this is a lose-lose situation, where you have expensive parking signs, and where you have no enforcement, because there's already an enforcement issue, but much more than a no parking.
Have you spoken to the superintendent or that?
It's not my job, that's the mayor's job.
Okay, fair enough, I got a long one up. Why he's not giving that?
Also, we bring up Willow Street, and I like Steve's address about the queue, that works great, if there's room to zigzag. But Willow Street is parked bump-to-bump from Broadway Street all the way down to Greenwood Street. During, whether it's football games, traffic, events, it's a mess. Willow Street is also part of the, an ordinance that's dedicated through truck route. So we have from Willow Street to Greenwood Street, all the way to Grand, has a dedicated truck route. Well, now you have all those vehicles in the way on a dedicated truck route. That doesn't really work for a John Deere tractor and a great big gravity wagon coming through. Maple Street also is a dedicated truck route, and it's only one-sided parking. You'd be absolutely nuts to park on Maple Street, but what's the difference? A truck route's a truck route.
Actually, Maple says it's both sides. No car, you know, from Grand to the South Quarter Line. It should be north as well, but it is both sides.
So yeah, and it looks like, if you go back to the traffic ordinance in 5.06, no parking zones, and number eight, it looks like they started to talk about it and then just lost interest, because it's Willow Street on the east side of, east side from Wolf Roadway Street, we don't have a roadway street. To Grossbeck, between the hours of 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So, I mean, that's a lot bigger problem than just those hours.
But is that like something to be promoted then as it's, that truck route, that since Willow Street is assigned a truck route, that while it's a truck route, it needs to have one-sided parking, because you're dealing with bigger vehicles, and you're dealing with, you're absolutely right, we implement, it's going to struggle.
I mean, a tractor going down Highway 10, and it's way wider than any of our streets.
We also have issues with the one, the city ballpark during summer on their games, through Clark there and by Casey's, lots where all parents park, obviously there's not enough room of ankle parking, and then between the elevator needing to use it, and tractors and trucks coming through there, it's kind of scary.
Yes, this problem is much deeper than just the one block in Grossbeck, so I don't know how to attack this fairly. And I mean, whenever the school paves their parking lot, that's not a self-issue, they're not getting that many parking spots.
And it sounds like the, the aspect of Willow, like, that's an easy no-brainer, because it's already been designated a truck route, so then you define what that looks like on a residential street, which means we need more space, which means, hey, on a truck route, it's one-sided parking, or it's limited parking there.
Or no parking.
Yeah, like, because on, so, you know, I take that as a bus driver's perspective for Willow, okay? So I've never driven a bus to a South of Ryan game at home, but how do you get a bus out of that parking lot into a street of Willow that's absolutely crammed full of cars the whole way down? And then once you get down Willow, it does a little bit of this, which means you've got to turn that 60-foot left. It's, it's limited. And so, yeah, and heaven forbid an emergency. And so, yeah, and heaven forbid an emergency happens.
So one of the, in the parking prohibited, number twelve, hazardous locations, when because of restricted visibility or when standing or parked vehicles would constitute a hazard to moving traffic, or when other traffic conditions require, the chief of police may cause curbing to be painted with a yellow color and erect no parking or standing signs. So that allows any particular, specific spots that may be problematic, rather than a whole universe of the street. Would allow that in those cases perhaps.
Is it more expensive to put up a no parking zone than to paint all the curbs on the south side of Willow?
No, because you can write a grant to Diamond Bowl, they'll get free paint.
So you just paint one, one side of the curb? For the universal, you can park on yellow.
And also has exceptions for churches, the fire station. So I know we didn't talk a lot about commerce, but in front of, across from the fire station, there should also be twenty feet within the driveway and the opposite street. So they have to run them about within seventy-five feet of the set, and this one properly signed, posted. That's there, number eight or nine. Five feet within fire hydrants, ten feet within an intersection or alley. Which would help, as you mentioned, if you're a little bit low moving, try to turn in. And there's a car too close, sometimes to the stop sign, you don't have room to enter the roadway and then queue, as you mentioned, to wait to get by there.
Has anybody given pricing on what a post can assign a class? And you said they're fairly expensive, I just wanted to know. What would the budget item like be?
They're not that bad. It's not like the ones that the school puts in a big flashing, push a button, all that, those are like.
No, I'm just talking about just the parking.
Just a sign.
And posts.
How many do you need per block?
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, seventy-five.
Seventy-five, a hundred bucks, the post, seventy-five, a hundred bucks maybe for the sign and the posts, it's pretty much sure we have some.
We do have some.
Oh, I was assuming we have a supply of posts or.
Oh, okay.
Placing, oh, okay, you know, this middle channel one.
So maybe a survey or something should be done to establish how many licenses, how many signs, and how far apart to come up with a budget item. Maybe what's the price of the budget item, we'll all move forward. I don't have any counsel besides to do. So you take an ordinance change, right, eventually? So you wanna get all your work done.
Before.
Yeah, before you do the ordinance.
Check into the sign pricing and back to the yellow paint that may be used on some of it?
Yep.
Well, so let's say it's a hundred bucks a post or a sign, and you need one sign for the block that says, no parking this side, on this block this side. And if you incorporate Willow, the block in front of the fire station, one block of Grossbeck, because some of green, some of day, it's fifteen blocks, fifteen hundred dollars.
I check things, it's gotta be a little bit more than that with the sign.
Well, it might not be labor and they do the painting.
So is it, is, as far as placement, is there a requirement for that? One per block or some, whatever somebody's feed or?
Shelby, the duty, the police department to erect, the cost to erect, appropriate signs, giving notice, and no such regulation shall be affected when the signs are erected and in place, and to tell the offense, etc. When there's a parking ban or uniform application related to snow removal, when the signs are still erected, giving notice, no person shall disobey, that doesn't say about how many, I'm sure that's a D O T type.
Standard, actual standard of the thing, some sort.
One per block would be very generous.
Yeah.
Forget the one that, what it says by your place, but essentially it says no parking.
Probably start and stop of the block.
Some two per block.
Yeah, somewhere, I mean, somewhere in between.
Right, that cuts the list down by the way.
I'll just say one more thing to me, if I, if I have, can park on one side of my block, that would be a big deal.
You don't think that's right?
I don't think that's a big deal. If I park in front of my house or I have to park across the street, it's not a big deal to me, so.
Do you all have to be equipped to not park out in front of our house for six months out of, five months out of the year?
Well, that's it, you got, from November on, you can't park on the street, period.
That's only over nine.
Yeah, but there's still a point of time where you don't park on the street.
Yes. Is it, has it been inconvenient occasionally? Because I'm on that street with, and my side is a no parking block, a little bit, a couple times. Graduation, maybe, family gathering. Right, but again, I don't think that, I'd rather not, yeah, restrict that and complain so that it has to park in, so that occasionally I can have, not have that problem. At inconvenience, I'd rather make sure that ambulance, garbage truck, everybody else can get through there fine, than worry about the two times a year I might be slightly. Right, for safety reasons.
Maple, Grossbeck intersection there is the worst in town, especially when you turn to west. Left-hand lane. It's bad. I think they should put a turning lane there. That's like the mayor's song.
Turning on, from Grossbeck on to Maple?
Maple to Grossbeck, yeah.
We need one of those.
He's got the order a lot right on, no big deal.
Yeah, no big deal right there. We just need, there was a rock down a block further that somebody took the big chunk out of it to do.
Ross?
A big rock that they put in that so that people don't, do that, put someone in. And I think they paid for it because it would be pretty good, that big holder, you know, on Broadway and Maple. I haven't tried that yet. Not with your newer color, don't try it. Does anyone else have any other ideas, suggestions?
Safety first.
Right, that's where I'm at too. I think we have to remember the safety. I would hate to hear about it, that somebody couldn't get through, or an ambulance or a fire.
In sporting events, that's a scary thing, really, because we've got enough clearance for ACOF to go through those both sides. There's a lot of traffic going on, well, you don't have room to zip, you know, yeah, full side to side. And none of us like having rules applied to us, okay? But that's part of living in community, like, nobody told their dog can't crap wherever it wants. But like, that's part of living in community where you don't have it happen on someone else's, like, parking is the same way. Part of living in community is, okay, they give up a little bit.
Picking up your junk.
Yeah.
All the same.
Yeah.
There's kids kept run out between cars on Willow Street, you know, that could be a tragedy.
And then there's no sidewalk along Willow for them to walk on, like, yeah, like, so.
And that's the sad thing.
People walk in the street and on a foggy day like we've had the last couple days, that's a huge risk.
Yes, yes, I can believe that.
Most people walk in the streets anyway, there's people out walking, and that on their sidewalks.
People with kids walking in the street and there was.
With their strollers.
So this, Willow already has some just one-side parking, is what I'm saying right now.
Till four, till, I don't know. I don't know.
Only really close to the school.
Yeah, just down on that end.
So.
From Broadway to Grossbeck, so just those.
So for football games in there, their cars are there about three hours or so?
Because they can, anytime after four o'clock, they can.
And they don't obey, they don't wait.
Across country means it's a little disaster out there right now on the highway.
Yeah, but.
If we don't, if we don't get somebody hit at Dollar General right now, that'll be, because everybody's parked right for the driver at Dollar General, so you can't see either way.
My point is, is that during the games, it's a known, known thing, so. Our emergency personnel should be aware of that, that it would have to be a different route, but day to day.
But what if your goal is the heart of Willow, like where Willow meets Grossbeck, or where Willow meets Broadway? But yeah, you know, then how do you get through all that mess if you've got traffic going, parked on both sides? And you say there's a restricted time, but like, when it's field day, everybody parks where they want in the middle of the day and doesn't care about the sign. And, and, and I know that because I've gotta drive through there, and so the signs are only, as Mr. Harper said, nearly as good as the enforcement.
So what you're saying is by the intersections are tough?
By the intersections, but like, if you have an emergency, like, you can't avoid Willow if you have to, if Willow is where you're destined. And so the likelihood of having an emergency at the football field.
Anything on the southwest side of town, Willow Street is our street, so it's a mixed street.
What I'm saying is, you know, something's happening there. I understand what you're saying, but you're not gonna totally get traffic not to park on Willow Street.
So you want him to drive around an extra block or two to get around that while trying to put your fire out?
Well, it's ever prudent.
Building most direct route would be most prudent. If my house is on fire, I want him to take the most direct route.
Okay, so then you put no parking on Willow whatsoever anytime you need.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a truck route, so I mean, it doesn't just affect me, it's affecting.
But how many trucks are on there after five o'clock in the afternoon, gee, that's awful.
When, when.
The absolute solution is you have no parking on Willow Street either side.
When rains are coming, have you seen a farmer's stock?
No.
I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult here.
No, I know.
It's just facts of life.
Yeah, I agree with you totally.
It's too bad that that has to be a truck route, you know, what it is.
What other option is there for a truck route?
There isn't another option, but I said, it's an awful busy street, you know, with the school and all of that.
So what happens if you get, okay, this might be a dumb question, but what happens if you get pulled over on a no parking? Are you supposed to pull over on a no parking, or do you wait and turn?
And go up further?
And go up further, like.
No, I mean, you're pulled over right away.
Okay, well, I mean, like, people should keep going and wait until there's no parking and be like, why get one of the stops, because they can't park on there.
No.
And then they get double whammy on a ticket or something, okay.
Now if you step up and we're going eighty, they.
But, but then, if you put no parking on Willow, like for football games, I mean, it all has to be equal all day long. All those people that used to park on Willow, where are they gonna park? Right?
Well, I was kinda hoping the school would have sufficient parking for the house, but.
I, I don't think it's.
No parking garage.
Park uptown, walk to game.
If you could at least do one side, that'd make a heck of a lot of difference.
Well, I thought there was one side.
No.
Oh, no, it's restricted, yeah, you can park up there after four o'clock, yeah.
That's easy enough.
Just a little bit, change the sign.
Change the sign, no parking.
And then it's gotta be enforced, especially for there.
They did it because the school basically knows how it works, right?
Right.
Yeah, because of heavy traffic flow.
Yeah, well, since it's an emergency route, it sounds like a truck route, just.
That sign's gotta be said, changed.
That's what I would suggest. So if there's just parking on one side, how do you deal with that, right?
I don't care, I mean, I.
Well, I mean, it'd be easier for your emergency.
Yeah, I mean.
And easier at the intersection.
This didn't really start on my token of voice, it just turned into emergency services, so I'm here representing.
Because we're thinking about you. Well, that's the thing that we are worried about though, is the emergency parts. That's, we would hate to find out that just because we didn't do anything, that you guys couldn't get through.
That's why we have big bumpers in front of the truck.
Oh.
Move the cars right away.
Whatever.
And, and from the busing perspective, our bus barn is right there, how to get through?
And the big thing here, and I'm not trying to throw the mud at the police department, but I mean, a lot of this discussion is enforcement issue.
Yeah, if I can see that.
And I mean, I wish he was here to defend himself, so that's why I really don't wanna get into a mud swing contest, it's like, a whole lot.
Well, the truth is the truth.
But I'm in a tricky, I'm, I'm in a tricky position.
We'll also need to inform the settlement officer of. That we're not.
We don't have a whole game, whatever. I don't think we can afford, we're not, we're not asking on it right now.
No, they still will be looking at us, right, because after four.
It's after four o'clock, you don't start parking, so that's what's breaking me.
We can just enforce the others.
I didn't park on that side of the street there, I would go inside a lot. I've never parked bus barns here.
So does this school, where that like, is it free parking, one old town where they tore it down? Do they park people that far back on games or anything, or no? Do you know where, is it free from war, they usually let that house that just go down? Do they park that far back for football games?
Yeah, right.
Why not?
I don't know. The schools, there's a drawing between there, but there's a little drawing. She could drive right from the.
No, I don't think so.
It is.
Well, I'm just saying that could, but that could relieve some issues too, if they, why can't they just pull it out?
And then let the rest of the traffic, so.
I mean, there's driveway right there where the garage used to be, why couldn't they just park down there? That would relieve some of the issue as well, if they let parking be down there.
They'd start making parking.
They do use people to help make sure they fill the lot as much as they can around the corner.
Right.
People aren't all willy-nilly, so they take the most use of the space, you're right, they put some things going out, that would be a thought, and then help out.
It sounds like you got a project to work on, I mean.
Yes, I think it's gonna take a little bit to get it together.
Yep.
But we've got some good ideas.
Yeah.
That's what we wanted.
And you wanna do it just once, so you don't have to worry about it.
Exactly.
So we don't have to do it again, amend it.
It doesn't really have to be complicated, it's just how, how you want to help.
Right, and how much you wanna do. But there are a few things we might need to start with first.
I just appreciate you guys being willing to address it.
I would think you wanna do down by the school, please get all the signs changed up.
I do too.
Yeah.
People used to it anyway.
Yeah, get started, some of the issues, and maybe talk to the school about that other lot, if it's workable. I don't know if they've got plans for it.
Okay.
And maybe run a, well, discuss with NACU and say, hey, this gotta be looked into. Especially now when we change it. Well, if we change, if we change it, then, you know, maybe the school could have somebody out there directing traffic, say, no, you can't park here, but you can go down there at the end of the block and.
Right.
Do I look like an enforcement?
There you go. Guns. She has guns, she's got guns. We're gonna give you a squirt gun. Frank doesn't have guns, yeah, squirt gun.
Squirt gun.
Squirt guns, yep.
No? Well, we got some a lot of good ideas, I think. And some issues that need to be addressed.
And I think part of it too is, no one's probably ever read this very boring page and trying to figure out where it is, and maybe a visual map would assist people in understanding it. We can communicate that in a different way, a little more graphic, visual way.
If people have questions, they can come to the city and see the ordinance and get a map or something and go from there, if they're really interested. So all you gotta do is hand, do it and say, here you go, because you don't need to stand there for an hour trying to explain it to everybody that walks in the door.
But if you set a standard, then that's gotta be standard across the city, right?
Should be, yes.
Which a standard is easily set by the width of the street and the traffic volume. So traffic volume on Willow is too heavy to allow parking on both sides. So, I mean, the width of the street, it's at twenty-four feet, doesn't allow for natural parking on both sides, because we can't get along so well.
Well, because that's the guideline that Kelly found anyhow, where it's not like we're just coming up with our own ideas here.
And if people have more suggestions, you know, we're willing to listen, come to the meeting.
That's right.
Yeah, that's right.
Anybody have any closing thoughts? I don't know that we really need to adjourn officially, but we will, and I'll make sure to adjourn. Very motion to adjourn, let's see, we have a second.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Okay, we have a two motion and a second to adjourn. Yep, cricket, and a cricket, and cricket has been adjourned. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Or if you'll say nay. Adjournment at seven forty-nine PM.